The questions the district has received, we would like to address and clarify the curriculum being taught in the Danville Area School District schools. Danville Area School District follows the Pennsylvania Department of Education's academic standards using curriculum previously vetted through an approval process. When new textbooks and materials are being considered, a team of teachers, parents, and administrators review potential resources. Teachers carefully review the materials and specific lessons to assure the items are in line with the Danville Area School District curriculum and the PDE academic standards. The team recommends the top textbook and/or resources to be considered by the superintendent. At that time, the superintendent evaluates the selection and determines whether or not to make the recommendation to the school board. That isn't a rubber stamp, by the way, because I've had things come across my desk this year that I have said, "Let's go back and look again." Majority of vote of the school board is needed to adopt new resources, planned instruction, or textbooks. This process is followed by, or is follows these policies: 102 academic standards, policy 105 curriculum, policy 107 adoption of planned instruction, policy 108 adoption of textbooks, policy 109 resource materials. All the processes are discussed during public curriculum, instruction, and technology meetings, and nothing is done without school board presentation and approval. That's why we end up showing it, doing presentations to the board prior to asking for approvals. Critical race theory is not part of the PDE academic standards or the Danville curriculum. CRT is a theoretical approach to material generally discussed in higher education, not at the K-12 level. As a district, we remain steadfast in our commitment to inclusion and continuous improvement so that all students feel valued and are prepared for their future. Our job is to prepare all of our students to achieve personal success and well-being. Copies of the PDE academic standards for history and civics and government are available. They're at the side table, and our policies can be found at our website at www.danville.k12 PA.us.
Thank you.
The next piece is the health and safety update regarding the fact that CDE came out with some different guidelines this past week. As of July 28, Pennsylvania officials have stated that they will not be mandating masks across the Commonwealth. The original guidelines from CDC on July 12 recommended masks for unvaccinated individuals with social distancing of three feet. On July 27, the recommendation changed to fully vaccinated individuals wear a mask in public indoor settings in areas of substantial or high transmission of the disease. Additionally, CDC is recommending universal indoor masking for all teachers, staff, students, and visitors to schools regardless of vaccination status. The Pennsylvania Department of Health does endorse the CDC's new guidance and calls for masks in the area of high or substantial virus transmission rates. As of July 30, Montour County's level of transition for COVID was low category. As of today, 69.2% of the county population is fully vaccinated, with an additional 3.7% being partially vaccinated. So that's nearly three-quarters of the population has some vaccination, with the majority having full vaccination. Given the lack of a mandate from the governor or the Department of Health or PDE regarding mask mandates, we do not believe that requiring daily mask-wearing in our buildings is feasibly enforceable. As we did last year, we will adhere as strictly as we can to any requirements provided to us by the governor, the Department of Health, or PDE. But please note that due to federal mandate, all students and bus drivers must be masked on the buses as they enter, as they exit, and at all times. Therefore, as the health and safety plan indications, Danville recommends mask-wearing by all individuals, but is not mandating mask-wearing at this time. As information in our local conditions change suddenly, the Danville Area School Board and administration will review the core elements of the health and safety plan to coincide with recommendation. Currently, the plan states, "Danville Area School District will monitor the CDC guidance regularly and consider mitigation strategies that are recommended for implementation based on the level of community transmission rates. The district will use and layer the five key preventative strategies that are essential to safe delivery of in-person instruction." As a district, Danville is dedicated to considering the well-being of the whole child and will continue to maintain efforts to enhance the social and emotional health of our students and our staff. I do want to add that we were very successful last year in that we had no cases in any building that originated from the, from our buildings. We had one case that a student was quarantined and then became positive, but that was what we had. So we feel like we can, we've done a good job, and we'll continue to strive to do the best we possibly can.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Boyle. Next order of business is our first of our two public comment periods. The first one is for specific agenda items only. With that said, I'll open it up. Is there anybody tonight that would like to make a public comment during the first of the two public comment periods on agenda items? Okay? No hands are raised. Thank you. Moving forward, our next order of business tonight is our spring sports survey. I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Chris Johns.
Hey. Everybody hear me all right? Jeff, you have the presentation. I'll just start by saying this is a similar presentation that I gave back in April where I referred to our fall and winter season, and I'm going to talk a little bit and review some things that we talked about when it comes to the student surveys that we've started to do with our students, which we got a lot of powerful feedback from, and we have some more, some quotes directly from our kids, which we're going to talk about here in a little bit. But I just want to get started by just a quick summary of all of our teams this year and how we all did in the spring. As you know, we had a very successful fall season, a very successful winter season, and definitely a very successful spring season. So our kids really accomplished a lot this year. Our baseball team just missed out on district playoffs. They finished nine and 10 overall. Our softball team was 17 and 2. They won their first district title in 20 years this year, and they ultimately lost out in the PIAA state tournament to state finalist Toncanic in a 1-0 game. I think we played them as tight, as tough as anybody did in that tournament. So it was an amazing season for softball. Boys lacrosse was 5 and 9 overall. Team lost in the district semis. Our girls lacrosse team was 14 and 3. They won district four championship, and they advanced to the PIAA tournament. They lost to Twin Valley, who was ultimately a state semifinalist, and we played them really tough in that game. Boys tennis, the team record wasn't so great, but we had some good individual performances. Our doubles teams lost out, made it to the district tournament, and lost out. Both of our boys' track and field programs did amazing. We, each program had three athletes advance to the PIAA state meet. Boys had four medalists, so one of our hurdlers, Brandon Zimmerman, won two state medals this year. He had an amazing season, as did our other athletes that made it there, Jagger Dressler and KJ Riley. And we had three girls athletes that advanced to the PIAA state meet, Grace Petrick, Bella Johns, and Coila Bartholomew. So we had a really, really impressive showing with all of those teams. And again, I already mentioned some of these, but these are just some of the highlights. Again, softball, what a run they got on, first district title in 20 years. And if any of you went to any of those games and were around that team, they were one of the most fun teams to be around. They were always laughing. They were always having a good time, and they just, the atmosphere around that program was really, really great this year. As I mentioned, boys and girls track and field. We also set four school, four new school records this year, and we had one of our athletes, Jagger Dressler, set an overall district record in the triple jump, which was an amazing performance up at the district meet this year at Williamsport. Again, we had a medalist, also Grace Petrick, finished eighth in the 3200 down at Shippensburg. And our girls lacrosse program, again, they've been consistently such a strong program. They won their fourth district title in seven years, and they also participated in the tournament. Just a quick background, how we get to this point. As you know, we talked about before how we have a student survey. Just to kind of go through the process, our head coaches are evaluated annually. This includes being offered a pre- and postseason meeting with myself. At these meetings, we talk about goals, expectations, general feel for how they think their season's going to go over the course of a season. There's also regular preseason meeting with all of our coaches and our athletic trainers, and this was, again, especially important this year with all the COVID health and safety protocols. I have to say, our coaches really, really delivered this year over the course of everything that they were asked to do, from masking to taking temperatures throughout the whole entire season. We were really successful, I believe, in that aspect of the year. Throughout the season, we have constant informal conversations, meetings, observations that go on throughout the course of a season. But one of the areas of improvement that we wanted to expand was to give our student athletes an opportunity to provide constructive feedback to their coaches. So what we did at the end of each season, the end of fall, the end of winter, and now at the end of spring, was we did a voluntary survey, which we sent out to all of the student athletes who participated in that season. Again, it was strictly voluntary. A student did not have to give their name when they gave the feedback, but there were several areas of feedback that we gathered that I then broke out into each sport and shared with the coach before I had their postseason meeting so that we could actually have some, it was actually some really meaningful conversation with some of our coaches because we were taking student feedback and talking about things that they were seeing. And again, that's positive and negative. So I shared everything with them and said, "Here's what your student athletes are saying about what's happening within your program." Three different areas that we focus on in the surveys, this isn't too dissimilar from some of the things that we ask of our teachers or how we evaluate our teachers in the classroom. This is how we're evaluating our coaches out on the field. We look at their practice, planning, and teaching. We looked at their contest management, their character development, and mentorship. Several examples of questions that we asked the students to rate their coaches on. You can see, we asked them to do it on a four-point scale. Do you strongly agree with this statement? Do you agree? Do you disagree? Or do you strongly disagree? And these are just several samples. These are not all of them, but these are some of the samples that we asked our students to rate their coaches on. Everything from how are they accepting feedback, do they use appropriate motivational strategies? Are they self, do they have self-control? Do they display poise throughout the course of a season? Things like that. How do they handle an injured athlete? How do they work with the trainers? Section two, we talked about contest management. Do they have effective game plans based upon scouting reports? Do they discuss strategies? Do we have appropriate post-contest behavior, you know, importantly with athletes, officials, opponents, and families? How do we handle ourselves under stress? All of these things are things that we talk about throughout the season, but it is, you know, we think it's important to get feedback from some of the students and student athletes within the programs. In the last area, we talked about character development and mentorship. Does a coach use appropriate language? Do they respect the athletes, opponents, and officials? Do they set goals that are realistic and challenging? Especially, I think this is definitely an important thing here at Danville. Do they stress the importance of academics? And do they monitor student grades? Because as you know, we not only look for high achievement in the, on the field, but also in the classroom. And then we had several different areas where we asked for open-ended responses from some of our students, and this is strictly for them to reply in their own words. So some of these things are just quotes that I took from the spring surveys, just responding to some of these questions. I'm not going to read them all, but I'll pick one or two out here. First question being, "What is the best thing about playing for this coach?" "They had a cool athlete-to-coach relationship," somebody replied. "She inspires us all and never gives up. Everything. I wish I could come back and play for her again. Taught us more than just the sport." And I think those are some things that we want to inspire, and we want to hear some of our student athletes saying about our coaches. What would they like to change? Some of these are tough at times for coaches to hear, and they're sometimes tougher for kids to even speak. So we find it's a little easier for them to write things down, especially when they're anonymous. I thought one of the most, the ones that hit me was the one at the bottom. Somebody responded this year, and they said, "I'd like a little more leeway with other things going on in our lives." So sometimes our coaches do tend to get wrapped up in a season. I think it's important to remember, as we talk throughout mental health and we go through a lot of these different things, that sometimes it's not to be all and end all. It's not the most important thing that we do. But yeah, it's some things that, constructive things that I'll then share with all of our coaches at the next season meeting. Hey, here's some feedback that we got. Not specific. We're not talking about any kid, but these are some things that are coming back that our kids are saying. Again, some more open-ended responses here. "What message would you most like to share with your coach about this season?" And we thought this was an important question to ask because, again, kids, a lot of times, don't have an opportunity, once a season is over, to have that one-on-one with a coach to kind of look them in the eyes, and sometimes it's easier for them to type this out. And I think, you know, these are just some pretty powerful statements. "Thanks for taking me to States and making it lots of fun." I think fun is what we want it to be. The word was used a lot throughout this when they talked about what they wanted to say to their coach. "Thanks for pushing me to be better. I appreciated the enthusiasm and wanting everybody to improve. Very good season, even though it was a weird season. I think this whole year has felt weird." And some words like that were coming up from our kids when we look for feedback. "What's a lasting memory you want to take away from this past season?" This is really just an interesting, you never know what you're going to get answer from kids. So there are some on there that were pretty straightforward, which you kind of expected, and some of them kind of made you think a little bit, like number three, getting quarantined. Whoever thought you'd be quarantined from a season throughout the course of a year? I mean, we had kids that had to sit out for 15 days. One of our teams was shut down literally for 15 days, couldn't practice, couldn't do anything, had to then turn back around and figure out how to restart things throughout the year. So those were things that happened throughout to our kids, not only from out of the classroom, but also on the field. Having a season this year, there was a lot of mention of being with seniors, being with my seniors, my senior night, people who I were with, you know? And if you remember, this is a team, or I'm sorry, this is a season where we didn't have a spring season last year. So a lot of these kids missed out on some portion of their season. So it was a lot of just appreciation and talking about some of the people that they're able to spend time with. "If you played this sport for multiple seasons, which season was your most memorable and why?" It was a pretty consistent answer. This one. This one, because we got a season. This one, because it was canceled before. This one, because I got to be with my senior, my senior friends. You know, this one, because I can tell my improvements from previous years, and I love the environment of my team. This past season, lots of medals and good competition. So as you can see, these are, these are exact words from our kids. These are exact quotes that I pulled, that I just wanted you guys to hear some of the feedback that we're getting. And again, these are a lot of positive quotes. They're not all positive quotes, but I'm not going to put all of the negative things up here because I feel like some of those negative conversations are one-on-one with a coach that I want to have with them. Here's some things you can improve upon. Here's some things within your program that maybe aren't going so well. So it really just, if anything, it gives us some more, some more talking points and some more things that we can really focus on. What can we continue to do better? We always talk about continuing to do better, and I'm only one set of eyes, and administrators are only one set of eyes that they see, but we're talking about kids that are inside the program every day. So we really thought it was important to share some of this with you guys and just to say that this is something we're going to continue to do as we go forward and refine some of this, but it's really powerful stuff and some really important feedback that we get. And again, this ultimately doesn't determine yes or no, does somebody stay or does somebody go, but it's really great to have conversations for our head coaches and be able to, again, give me talking points when I sit down with them. So, Dr. Boyle, I don't know if you have anything else that you want to add from, you've seen a lot of this, and talked, we've talked through this so much and just been involved in this.
Right. I think over the past couple of years, we've really enhanced incorporating students in some of the information we gather and the data we gather, and I think that's a real positive because the students know that they are being listened to and heard, and, you know, also, it is, as Mr. Johns said, a good way for him to have dialogue with the coaches to help them have feedback that is only going to improve their skills. I think that's a real positive. So I thank you, Mr. Johns and Mr. Wynn, for, you know, pushing this ahead.
And I will say, in some of my postseason conversations that I had, because I'll share this with the coaches before we sit down for our meeting, they'll say, "I didn't even think of that." Or I got, I was so focused on the season that I didn't even think about that this was a kid that may be saying something like this, or this may be the feedback that they're giving me. So it's really, it allows them to kind of take some time and step back a little bit. And we do take a little time after the season ends before we have our meeting, just so we can kind of, you know, let the dust settle and kind of let things happen. But this is just some feedback that we have from our spring season. Again, we had amazing fall, winter, and now spring season, especially through COVID. So, you know, I just want to thank you guys as a board for supporting sports and athletics and extracurriculars. We know how important it's been for our kids. So at this point, I guess I'll open it up to any of you have any questions or any comments or anything that you'd like to add.
I just wanted to point out, as someone who has two student athletes here, the opportunity for them to have a voice has been very empowering for them. And again, it goes back to putting the children first. That's why we're here. And so they, they feel, they don't feel like they're being talked at. They feel like they're part of the process, and so I appreciate that. Thank you.
I'd like to say thank you, Chris, for putting this together. I think this process is really, really good, not only for the coaches, but our students. So thanks a lot for putting it all down.
Yeah, I'll add a thought to that. You know, our number one business on this board in this community is kids, without a doubt. And when you allow kids, so maybe more vocal than others or whatever, to have a voice and be able to participate in some fashion, I think that's healthy for the kid, kids, and certainly healthy for our district and our community. And I think this is a powerful tool. We've just gotten a year of this underway, and I think this is a real healthy thing for our, our community. So thank you to everybody, you know, that's here and behind the scenes that helped us with that, and the coaches and kids and all. So thank you. Anything else? Thank you. Okay. Next order of business, we have some consent items, consent agenda items. We'll take action if we choose to approve consent agenda items 7-1, 9-1, 9-2, 12-1, 12-2, 13-1, and 13.2. Do I have a motion to approve those recited agenda items?
I'll make that motion.
I second. Okay, thank you. And thank you.
Mrs. Edmeads.
Yes.
Mrs. Fish.
Yes.
Dr. Kattachu.
Yes.
Mrs. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Kirsh.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Huron.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, our next order of business tonight is board meeting schedules, and I will lead the discussion because I completely goofed up last meeting with my commitment to support the VOTEC team. They meet every third Tuesday of the month. So I, I just thought it was the second, and so I made a mistake. So when we had that discussion last time, I should have recognized that, and I didn't. So with that said, I propose, since we found that Tuesdays seem to be, it seemed to be an agreeable timeline, I want to open up the floor for discussion. Instead of the Danville District doing first and third Tuesdays, could we do that on second and fourth so we can also support our friends over in Columbia Montour on their, their one month? Oh, yeah. And this wouldn't, this wouldn't, this would go, based on tonight's discussion, this would be for September. We will keep, we'll keep everything in place for August, so. Sorry, but...
Your VOTEC meeting is on Tuesdays?
It's the, I thought it was the second. I didn't, I didn't turn my phone on and check, but it's, it's the third Tuesday of every month.
Tuesdays.
Yeah. And when I recognized the conflict, I hung my head in shame and said we're going to have to revisit it. So I apologize, gang. I didn't mean it, believe me. So I guess I'll throw out to the team, you know, do, how do, how do we, you know, sound like Tuesdays were agreeable?
CSI meeting sees on Wednesdays, on third Wednesday, so it might work for me. Instead of having a Tuesday here and a Wednesday there, I, it will give me some time to, so I'm, I'm okay with that. I just want to make sure the public knows the only reason is that the president of the board may have some conflict.
It's duty, though. And it's not just conflict, it's duty. It's not because I had something else to do. I just had that commitment for our VOTEC friends.
Chris, I think you're forgiven.
Am I?
I think you're forgiven.
Feel a little better.
And I think the second and fourth, our Tuesday is fine. However, I think as far as committee meetings, I think we did decide that, or we talked last meeting, that we weren't going to do anything with committee meetings until we reorg in December.
Correct.
So I'm fine with second and fourth for our board meetings, but leave committee meetings as, as they are.
Okay. All right. Does anybody else want to add to this at this point, or if we're good, if everybody's okay with moving forward with that idea of the second and fourth, we'd have to ask for a motion to do so.
I'll make a motion for the second and fourth.
Okay. Second. Okay, thank you.
Roll call, right? You're ready, Terry.
Mrs. Fish.
Yes.
Dr. Kattachu.
Yes.
Mrs. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Kirsh.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mrs. Edmeads.
Yes.
Mr. Huron.
Yes. Thank you. And again, that'll start in September, right? Okay. Sorry again, everybody. It was not with mal-intent. All right. Next order of business tonight is finance. We have two items in finance. We can break them out or combine items 11.1, 11.2. So open up the floor for a motion.
Mr. Huron, may I speak before we vote?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. I just want to say, it's important to note that Jamie Doyle from PFM gave a presentation on both of these motions at the last board meeting. It's also important to note that the additional principal and interest of the new money and the savings for their bond refinancing are unbudgeted items. The requirement for the new borrowing is that it is fully budgeted and funded two years from the settlement date of the borrowing or one year after the completion of the construction project.
That, anybody else? So with that said...
I'll make a motion to combine 11.1 and 11.2.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, and thank you.
That will be... Dr. Kattachu.
Yes.
Mrs. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Kirsh.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mrs. Edmeads.
Yes.
Mr. Huron.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we move on to our personnel items tonight. We have, oh, wait. We did that, excuse me. Sorry about that. Oh, one's at the bottom. All right, so now we're on to items 12.3 through 12.9. We can break them out, or we can combine them and create a motion just for those items.
I make a motion to do 12.3 through 12.9.
Okay. I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, and thank you.
Mrs. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Kirsh.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mrs. Edmeads.
Yes.
Mrs. Fish.
Yes.
Dr. Kattachu.
Yes.
Mr. Huron.
Yes. Motion carries. Okay. Item 15 is our board concerns. Items or any other comments by the board tonight? Ready? I would just like to thank, and I've been thinking a lot about what it takes to get off of a run like we just had with the pressures of COVID, find ourselves in a place where we've dedicated so much time and commitment to, to our number one job, which is our students. We find ourselves in an opportunity for, to have another fantastic year, and hopefully the backend of this won't, won't be like the one we had, we just had, where it compromised a lot of the wonderful things that students going through school have been able to experience. So I want to thank, thank this board team for the amount of effort and dedication and focus, as well as the administration team and everybody through the ranks. It's been a tough ride, but we've, we've held together, and that, that collaboration has paid off. So thank you, everybody, for all that hard work and commitment. Okay, I'll then turn it over to our second of the two public comment periods where it's an open floor for anybody if they'd like to make a public comment tonight. Yes, sir? We can break them out, or we can combine them and create a motion just for those items.
I make a motion to do 12.3 through 12.9.
Okay. I have a second.
Second.
Thank you. And thank you.
Mrs. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Kirsh.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mrs. Edmeads.
Yes.
Mrs. Fish.
Yes.
Dr. Kotachu.
Yes.
Mr. Huron.
Yes. Motion carries. Item... Transportation, excuse me. I've got a lot of colors on my paper. I've got to get my colors sorted out. All right, item 14, our transportation bus drivers list. The board will take action to approve the bus drivers lists for the 2021 through 2022 school year as presented. So I have a motion to approve item 14.1.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
And thank you. And thank you.